Welcome to another edition of Lakeville's City Council Wrap-Up. During this program, we will highlight the agenda items presented to the Lakeville City Council at their November 20th, 2017 meeting. First highlighted item on the agenda is item number 5C, Fire Department Quarterly Report. And to provide the background information on this agenda item is Fire Chief Mike Meyer.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'd like to present the Fire Department's Third Quarter Report. And we'll start with fire inspections that we completed in the third quarter. We had 95 commercial inspections completed, nine new daycare inspections, our fair home safety visit, we had 72 visits, and with those visits, we did 72 stove top fire stops installs, along with 144 smoke detectors that were installed during that time. Fire prevention visits that we had, this is going back July, August, on the far left that you can see, the Little Tyke Safety Camp. And Safety Camp, that's a partnership that we do with the Police Department and the Parks Department. The middle picture is at the Fire Prevention Day at Dakota County Fair, so we have a number of presentations and displays, and the firefighters are out there. And then the far right is the Fire Department Open House that we held in October at Station 4. One new item, the very bottom picture, which is hard to see, but was a mini house that we built and demonstrated the importance of keeping your doors closed, as far as if there's a fire in the house, if you open a door, potential for that fire to spread is much greater if you keep the doors closed. And that's why we want people to sleep at night with their doors closed. Fire prevention visits, we went with a little different change here, so station tours and visits, we had 350-plus children that we met and adults as far as those visits. The school visits, the 654, that is for what we did in October of going through fire prevention months, so 654 kids throughout the school district, and not just Lakeville, but also Apple Valley and Rosemont School District with the new school that they have. We also had three businesses that asked for fire extinguisher training that we went out and conducted that for them. Back in July, we had our waffle breakfast and participated in the Panaprog Parade, and this was another record year for us for serving waffles. We had 2,100-plus plates or waffles that were served for that day, so it continues to get busier for us. In August, with partnership with the Police Department, we participated in National Night Out, where we visited 54 different parties throughout the community. Instance that we had in the third quarter, so I'm just going to highlight the top right picture where you see the truck spraying water, that was an accident on 202nd and Hamburg, involved a truck that had about 300 gallons of foundation spray in it, that hit a car, rolled to its side, caught fire, another car hit that one, so we had two vehicles on fire, four vehicles total involved in the vehicle fire. But the one reason I wanted to highlight the call is that this happened to be a Tuesday morning, so we had two engines from Lakeville down in Abel at training for a live burn. How our CAD system works, it actually paged Farmington and our station too, because those were the closest two, so not, it was pretty close, obviously, to downtown, but yet, because we were busy, it brings in other stations, how our systems work, and how we rely on our neighboring departments to help out when we might be away for training. Looking at our call numbers, you can see from '16 and '17, from July, August, and September, we're pretty close in call numbers. And just remember that the 2015 numbers are lower, and that's when we added the duty crew program to this. Looking at year-to-date, though, a little bit different, so 2016 to '17, we've seen an 8% increase in our call volume. Our duty crew program continues to grow, we have about a 75% fill as far as firefighters signing up for shifts Monday through Friday during the business hours. During that time, in the third quarter, they responded to 133 calls. You can see their response times there, and then the call volume, or the calls that they are responding to in the right, medicals tend to be the majority of the calls that we do respond to. Breakdown of call types for us as a department, medicals, again, are our number-one calls that we do respond to, followed by good intent calls and false alarms as 2 and 3. One thing I'll just highlight on the fires, you see 20 fires that we responded to, that's a pretty wide range of fires, it's vehicle fires, house fires, grass fires, so it's not just, when you think of fires, it's not a structure fire, house fire. Some fitness and public safety foundation partnerships that we completed in the third quarter. The top right or left picture, excuse me, is a Ragnar relay, where 12 firefighters signed up, and we ran a 200-mile relay from Winona to St. Paul. The bottom-left picture is, we started a program with firefighters and their spouses to do yoga at the station, so we do that once a month. And then the other pictures remaining are from the lights and sirens glow run that we held at Station 4. We exceeded our numbers, I think we had 250-plus runners or walkers signed up for the event, so a very successful event. August 14th, we started six new firefighters, three at Station 1 that you can see, one at Station 3, and two at Station 4. They've completed their medical training, so they've completed their certification for that, and they're about a third of the way through their fire training. That completes the third quarter report. I want to thank you for your dedication and support to the Lakeville Fire Department, and I'll stand for any questions.
Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number 7, Public Hearing on the 2018 Street Reconstruction Project. And to provide the information regarding this agenda item is Public Works Director Chris Petrie.
Before we open the public hearing, I wanted to just briefly go through the 2018 Street Reconstruction Project with a few slides for background information, as well as a few, where do we go from here? So first off, the project location, you can see, based on the slides in front of you, I apologize, the maps are rather small, but on the northern, or the top of the map, is County Road 46 or 160th Street. On kind of the western side, you can see is Ippava running north and south, we'll see if my mouse can be right there. And then, as we go over here to this other map, this is Ippava Avenue here, and this is 175th Street, just to give everyone an idea where these project locations are. So background, we share this every year, just to remind folks what Lakeville's pavement management program is all about, and our city streets are all rated based on their condition, and information from that is used to develop our city's capital improvement plan, and we started doing this back in 2009. Of course, streets were rated before that, but we really developed this plan starting in 2009. Project background, the City Council authorized the preparation of a feasibility report for this project on July 5th earlier this year, that was following a neighborhood informational meeting that we had at the end of June, and then the public hearing ultimately was ordered by the City Council on October 16th. So what's included in this project? Street reconstruction, that includes pavement reclamation, that's not just simply milling and overlaying the surface, that's reclaiming the entire surface into the subgrade. We also have spot curb and gutter replacement, and then storm sewer enhancements, and stormwater basin maintenance, and some other things that occur with the project. This is fairly consistent, at least the scope of work and what we're proposing to what has been done in the 2016 and 2017 Street Reconstruction Project areas. We also are doing some water system improvements, that includes corrosion protection to the existing iron water main pipe, based on the soil types here, specifically in that, or this area, we've done soil borings, they're corrosive in nature, that's not harmful to anyone, what it's harmful to is the iron pipe, and it prematurely erodes away at the pipe, where we have more water main breaks and those sorts of things. So by doing corrosion protection on this water main, we're extending the useful life of the existing system that's in place, instead of simply replacing it. So project costs and financing, the estimated total project costs based on the feasibility report are $8.881 million. You can see it broken down, how we fund this, this is based on our street reconstruction assessment policy. City CIP funds are at $4.5 million. City utility funds for the water and sanitary sewer improvements that are not assessed are at $1.3 million, and the special assessments are just a little bit more than $3 million. So for everybody in attendance, and for the council as a reminder, our city assessment policy for street reconstruction is project costs are assessed at 40% of the project, so 60% of the share is picked up by our city CIP funds and the general tax levy, while the remaining 40% are specially assessed. This includes only the street and storm sewer improvements, it does not, and you can see it in the second bullet point, include anything related to water main, sanitary sewer, stormwater basin, or storm sewer, water quality, manhole improvements, those are all financed by separate utility funds, and only properties benefiting from these improvements are to be assessed. Our assessment policy is based on a per-unit basis for property zone, single-family use, duplexes, townhomes, which we have some in this project, are at a half-single-family unit, and their commercial uses are assessed based on a front-foot basis. I will say, related to the single-family units, all properties throughout the whole project, those maps that I've shown, would be assessed at the same unit rate regardless of what type of roadway you live on, and some other things, that has been a policy decision of the City Council since the inception of our street reconstruction project, or program, excuse me, so that costs are equally distributed across all areas of the project. Corner lots, only one unit is assessed, we get that question a lot, do you get assessed twice if you're on a corner lot? But it's for either the side or the front, and it's typically determined based on driveway location, house orientation, or past assessments. So the estimated assessments are estimated at $4,341 per single-family unit. Commercial or public use properties are calculated based on residential unit equivalents, and that's all contained within the feasibility report. So assessments, this hearing tonight isn't about the assessments, because this is just the estimated amount based on the feasibility report. This public hearing and this meeting tonight is about how valid the project is, and should we move forward with the project. The assessments will actually be considered at a separate hearing after bids are received and opened, and actual assessments calculated, and that's scheduled to occur on April 16th, 2018. Differments are available for senior citizens and disabled persons. Property owner comments, thus far, short of a couple additional comments and questions I received today that I didn't get on this presentation, we've received approximately 20 comments by phone or email prior to the public hearing. Most comments are related to assessments, which is pretty typical, and mostly about terms and process. So the project schedule, again, the council set the public hearing back on October 16th, we're here tonight, holding the project public hearing and looking for the council to order the project following that hearing. We would expect to open bids and compute the assessments in March of 2018, followed by the second meeting in March, declaring the costs and setting an assessment hearing on March 19th, 2018. And then, as I mentioned, we would look for the assessment hearing, as well as the council considering an award of a construction contract at your April 16th, 2018 meeting. Construction would begin, as we have, based on weather, typically late April, early May, and continue into the fall of 2018, and then assessments would be certified to the county in November 2018. So with that, I'd of course be happy to answer any questions, but recommendations from the staff is to conduct the public hearing, and then consider the resolution in front of you, ordering the improvements, and authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications for this project.
Item number 7 was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda was item number 8, Public Hearing on the 2018 Kenrick Avenue Reconstruction Project. And once again, to provide the background information on this agenda item is Public Works Director Chris Petrie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, very similar presentation to the one you just heard, so I'll go very quickly, but I want to be respectful of those that may be in attendance for this one as well. So this is the Kenrick Avenue Reconstruction or Improvement Project, this extends, you see the maps in front of you, the map on the left side of the screen is the northern portion of Kenrick from the Burnsville border with Lakeville, heading south. It heads south as you move to the right-side map, just south of Fleet Farm there, to give you a bearing on what this project consists of. Again, I talked about this already, so I'll spare you, but of course, dating back, this fits within our pavement management program. Same type of background and timeline as we just talked about with the 2018 Street Reconstruction Project, the council authorized the feasibility report on July 5th, a public hearing was ordered at your July, or October, excuse me, 16th meeting. Street improvements, similar to what we just heard, but a little bit different, because this is a collector roadway for us. So pavement reclamation, the same situation, not just milling and overlaying the surface, complete reclamation. The one difference here from our street reconstruction, based on our evaluation and inspections of the curb, this would include complete curb and gutter replacement along this entire stretch of the roadway because of the amount of deficient curb. We also have some sidewalk along the roadway, so there is spot sidewalk replacement, and there also is some storm sewer enhancements that need to take place along this corridor. Water system improvements, we'll talk in a minute about corrosion protection, but there is some water main replacement that needs to occur at 167th Street, based on maintenance history in the area. We did some of that work, actually right up to Kenrick, and actually extended into Kenrick this year, it's just to the south of the Harley-Davidson dealership and Moto Primo. We did some of that work this year as part of our 2017 Street Reconstruction Project, but just a little bit of replacement of water main there, and then for the rest of the stretch of the water main, we'll be continuing with the corrosion protection that I talked about earlier as well. Estimated project cost for this project is $2.961 million. City CIP funds are $2.154 million. Utility funds for that water main replacement, and some of the storm sewer work is $227,000, and special assessments for the project is $578,000. We talked again about the city assessment policy, however, what's different here is most are commercial businesses, of course, so project costs are still assessed at 40%, however, they're prorated to reflect the assessable front footage only, include street and storm sewer improvements, only benefiting properties from the improvements are assessed, and water main and sanitary sewer improvements that I talked about a few minutes ago are not assessed as part of the project. Again, this is assessed on a front-foot basis for property zone, commercial or public use, these are assessable lots, or the assessable lots are determined based on the driveway location, building orientation, or past assessments. So estimated assessments for the project are estimated at $77.44 per front foot, this is for all commercial and public use properties. Assessments, same as our previous meeting, again, would be considered at a separate hearing on April 16th, 2018. And property owner comments, city staff following our neighborhood meeting, and once this letter went out, the notice of the public hearing, we received approximately five comments by phone or email prior to the public hearing, I did receive one more today, from the mobile home community with a few questions that's along Kenrick, but again, most comments were in regard to project schedule, and specifically with this group, because of the retail nature of their businesses, and also assessments, terms, those sorts of things. Very similar project schedule, as we saw before, the one thing I would point out, though, is when we get down to construction, June 2018 through November 2018, when we just talked about the street reconstruction, we talked about an April-May start date, following our neighborhood meeting, and a number of the businesses that attended that meeting, we received feedback that it would be very beneficial if we could hold off on starting construction until sometime in June, or late June, possibly even July, to help facilitate kind of their spring business, if you know some of the businesses along there, and we believe with the project schedule, we can accommodate that. So that's what we have in front of you here, we'd still go with the same schedule for bidding and preparation of plans and specifications, just hold off on starting construction until June or early July. Same thing, certifying assessments in November of 2018. So with that, staff's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing, and then consider a resolution ordering these improvements, and authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications and advertisements for bid. And with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Item number 8 was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda was item number 9, Cedar Crossing Second Edition. And to give the information regarding this agenda item is Planning Director Darrell Morey.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, I will be brief. As Mr. Johnson mentioned, this is a preliminary plat of 15 single-family lots and one outlot. It also includes, in your actions before you this evening, a comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide the property from medium-high-density residential to low-medium-density residential. That area is shown here on this exhibit, and that will match the land use guiding for the Cedar Crossings' first-phase development. And in conjunction with that would be a rezoning from RM2 Medium Density Residential District to RST2, again, to match the Cedar Crossings' plat that was approved last year. And what I have here, I got my staff to put these two plats together, and I think this is, especially given Mr. Johnson's presentation, he mentioned the triangle, that is Cedar Crossing Second Edition, which includes one cul-de-sac street with the 15 lots around it, an outlot for stormwater management at the south end. Everything that's outside of that orange highlighted triangle is the first Cedar Crossings' plat, again, that was approved last year, that's 108 single-family lots. You can see the connection to Cedar Avenue just to the north of here. The property, again, as he had mentioned, is constrained by a wetland complex, creek complex to the west, which is actually in an outlot of the original Cedar Crossings plat, and then there is a regional pipeline utility easement that runs along Cedar Avenue to the east, again, further constraining the property further, making it difficult to get a more medium-density product in there, thus the request for the comp plan amendment and the rezoning. All of these applications were considered by the Planning Commission at a public hearing at their meeting on November 2nd, and they unanimously recommended approval, there was no public comment at that public hearing. The Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Committee also reviewed the preliminary plat at their November 1st meeting, and again, unanimously recommended approval. As such, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat, the comprehensive plan amendment, and the zoning map amendment, rezoning the property, and adoption of the findings effect, and I can stand for questions.
Item number 9 was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda was item number 10, Pleasant Hill. And once again, to provide the background information on this agenda item is Planning Director Darrell Morey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I will try to be brief on this item as well. Preliminary plat and rezoning are the two applications that are before you this evening. This preliminary plat's a little bit bigger than the one prior, this is 113 single-family lots and four outlots. Before you is showing the property, it's 80 acres in its entirety, as Mr. Israelson said, it's bisected by what will be the extension of 179th Street, which is a future county road. And the south side is where the preliminary plat is proposed before you this evening. On the north side, there is a ghost plat that identifies a possible layout of the lots to the north. Now, the request includes a rezoning of the south half of the property, which is showing on here. The proposed ordinance that would rezone the property would be from RS3 Single Family to RS4 Single Family, so basically 80-foot, 5-foot wide lots to 70-foot wide lots. And part of the reason for that is that would then pretty closely match the lots that exist to the south in the city of Farmington, in their particular plat, so the request is to change that to RS4. The north side of the plat, which is basically that area north of 179th Street, would remain zoned RM1. As you can somewhat see, although I didn't highlight it here, the proposed plat is to be developed in four phases. In the first phase is included the extension of 179th Street to the east to connect with Pilot Knob Road. There is a little piece of that street segment that is outside of the boundaries of the plat that is adjacent to the Autumn Meadows plat to the west. The 179th Street will be built by the developer in its entirety, they will be reimbursed by the county, basically, for the portion that's over a major collector street segment through the development. The part that's adjacent, or excuse me, that's within Autumn Meadows, that's to the west, that's outside of the plat boundaries, the city has a cash escrow that was collected with the Autumn Meadows Third Edition Development, that'll help reimburse the developer for the cost of that segment, which is approximately an eighth of a mile. The developer hosted a neighborhood meeting for this project in July, there was approximately 27 people in attendance. The two major areas of concern at the neighborhood meeting was the tree stand that sits along, mainly along the south side of the plat, adjacent to the homes in Farmington, and there was also some residents from the Autumn Meadows Development that were concerned about the future extension of the roads from their neighborhood into the Pleasant Hill plat. Public hearing was held at the Planning Commission meeting on November 2nd, nobody showed up and addressed the Planning Commission at the public hearing, which just goes to show the value of the neighborhood meeting in this particular case, in being able to answer and address the questions and concerns of the neighbors at that time. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary plat and the rezoning. The Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Committee met on November 1st, and they also unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary plat. They did ask the developer to work with city staff on the possibility of saving some additional significant trees along the south side of the development. We do have in the staff reports, a statement from the city forester who has reviewed the stand of trees and the tree preservation on the property. It is mostly elms and box elders, which aren't particularly high-quality trees, but staff will work with the developer to see if there are some additional significant trees that can be saved in conjunction with the phases for the final plat. In summary, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat and the ordinance rezoning the property and adoption of the findings of fact, and I can stand for question.
Item number 10 was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda was item number 11, Purchase Agreement and Lease for Kenrick Liquor Store Property. And to give the background information regarding this agenda item is Assistant City Administrator Alan Kennon.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Today, we're going to take a look at the purchase agreement and lease that we've been working on with the Dreason Group for the past several months. Just to refresh everyone, what property we're talking about, it's the Kenrick Liquor Store, it's in the northwest corner of 162nd Street and Kenrick Avenue. The store is currently about 9,800 square feet, and it's about 2.11 acres of land that we're looking at selling to the Dreason Group. So a little bit of history, the city was approached in early 2016 by a developer looking at the property, wondering if there'd be an opportunity to expand on the property for his particular development. Staff took a look at the site, and did find that there was some excess property on the, throughout the property, there was excess area for future development. So in response to the request, the city submitted a public RFP, Request for Proposals from Developers, to submit for developing the property into additional retail spaces. We received four proposals, that was submitted to the City Council, the Liquor Committee, and the Finance Committee for Review. In particular, they looked at the purchasing price, the lease cost, and then the overall design of the four proposals that were submitted. Those three groups requested staff to continue negotiations with the Dreason Group, and through that process, the city worked with the Dreason Group, as well as the Liquor Committee, for the past couple of months, to finalize a purchase agreement and a sale price of $2.625 million, a 20-year lease, leasing the liquor store space back at a rate of $19 per square foot. Lease also includes no rate increase for the first five years, and a limited 7% increase every five years after that for the next 15. And also, the building will, the site will include additional retail, about a 1,300-square-foot retail space on the north end, and then additional 1,900 square feet on the south end, with an additional 2,100 square feet attached onto that with a drive-through use. The developer's also proposing to redesign the parking lot to include stormwater infiltration basin as a rain garden, as well as underground infiltration, some additional dumpster enclosure space, and is taking a look at actually sprinkling the current liquor store site along with the new development. So the developer, along with working very well with staff and being a good partner, and this is also looking at doing some substantial investment in the property overall with our current building, as well as the overall site. Paul Sterns is here tonight with the Dreason Paul Sterns is here tonight with the Dreason Group, representing the Dreason Group. And with that, staff recommends approval of the resolution for the purchase agreement and lease and we're available for any comments or questions.
Item number 11 was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Well, those were the highlighted items presented to the council at their November 20th, 2017 meeting. If you have any questions or comments regarding these agenda items, please feel free to call City Hall, the number is 952-985-4400. Thanks for watching this edition of Lakeville City Council Wrap-Up.